Recording in progress.
Regular meeting of the Riedel City Council, Ralph Hall, please. Mayor Doris, here. Member of the Congress, here. Councilmember Orr, excuse me. Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall, here. Okay, um, we have nothing to report on this closed session. So now we will, and please leave your place. Apply the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, equal and equal. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council action as not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Um, anyone, when you approach the podium, would you go great, um, just identify yourself, please? That would be lovely.
This is new business, is that it?
This is anything that fell on the agenda.
Okay. My name is Estella De Hiron. I'm in, um, Second Avenue, five oh one. And, and, uh, we would like to ask the city of Riedel to repair our three or four blocks of the street on Second Avenue. I'm gonna read in water here and then have a couple pages of signatures from people in Riedel. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Uh, we have been waiting for many years to see when you will pave Second Avenue between Davis and Columbus. The potholes on this street are awful. They're hard on our automobile and they make this area of Riedel look like a shanty town. Some parts of this street are higher than the sidewalk, so the water flows back into people's yards. All this will lower property values. One of our neighbors is in wheelchair and she enjoys going to her, in her wheelchair to the post office, to the dollar store and so forth. It's pretty shameful that she has to maneuver onto the street because the sidewalk is broken in many places. She might fall over. It's dangerous for her and other pedestrians. If the city cannot get the grant, maybe the state can provide funds for this. I know just coming over here, um, driving my car, there was such a big hole and there was another car coming toward me and I really, really needed to move over because of the the huge hole, but I couldn't because it was coming. So please consider this. We're very anxious to get our street fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to give that letter, did you? With the signature?
I still have a copy of the letter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Joyce McHenry and I recently bought a home on Second Avenue, Riedel, Rio, Rio, John.
I'll get it right. Alright, um. Besides what Estella had to say, the sidewalks are in deplorable condition. You, you can't push a baby buggy down the street. Kids can't skate. They can't play hopscotch. They can't play jump rope. Uh, they're, they're having a, a time that they shouldn't. They should be on safe sidewalks. Right? You don't see the children enjoying any part of the sidewalk. Any part of the sidewalk. In addition, some of the, some with nothing better to do find it a thrill to drive their car recklessly over the dangerous road. It's rubble. It's down to bare, uh, base material for the roads. Um, they act as if it's some kind of carnival ride and none of us in the neighborhood appreciate this. Um, as a result, further damages is done to the street. Uh, in rain season, the water is so deep, it's half, it's up to your cap. And it's under our cars and trying to get in and out of the cars is just impossible to keep dry. Um, so a lot of us stay indoors. On dry days and the sooty debris is thrown up into the air and covers our homes, our vehicles, and gets into our lungs. It's bad. I don't recommend to anyone to take this road either by car or foot. It's much too dangerous. We, the concerned citizens from Second Avenue, would like to invite you to view the Channel Three news story about Second Avenue's plight and this problem did not just now come, it's mishandled for many years now. It's been bandaged over and, uh, it's a bad, bad street. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
I forgot to mention that, uh, uh, how she was saying that this reporter, Spangler, Channel Three, uh, will be airing, she came out and looked and took pictures. So at six o'clock tomorrow evening, Channel Three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, Nick Angelo, uh, one by six, Greater Manhattan, Riedel, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, President. No, I, I can attest to Second Avenue. My actual soul still have our old house and it's in bad shape, always has been, needs to be lowered. Infrastructure's too high. Uh, the infrastructure needs to be lowered and then, uh, the street needs to be repaved. It's in bad shape. First of all, uh, well, now, second of all, sorry about that random comment, but I wanted to reach out, thank the city for their response and now in the recovery effort and what you guys have been doing is just phenomenal. Um, I can point fingers, but, uh, this is, uh, there, I've been a part of disaster response for a good period of my life and other places and the response and the cohesion that happened here, largely in part to the city and the fire department has just been beyond the pale. It's superb. So, thanks for everybody. Chamber of Commerce was able to, uh, you know, give out some small grants to local businesses. Um, uh, we, uh, threw a donation from, uh, Good Samaritan and, uh, Carlotta area, uh, came in, uh, donated some money for us for the businesses, so we were able to redistribute that out. Um, the interesting part is that people who got most damaged, um, actually refused to take any money. Uh, so both, uh, Route one oh one and, uh, C C Market said that the money would go, uh, further with somebody else. Um, they were small amounts, so, uh, the relative damage was pretty large for these guys, so it was a drop in the bucket to them. But, uh, just that camaraderie, uh, and, uh, uh, help, uh, C C Market actually asked me to donate the money to, uh, the Riedel Fire Department for the services that they provided during the, uh, this disaster and now recovery. So, uh, that said, um, I don't know if you guys had had a chance, I didn't see it on the agenda, so, uh, to, uh, mull over the, uh, idea of a community resiliency, resilient center, uh, with the fire department. Um, and if you could, uh, uh, get a letter of support for that, that would be great. Partnership would be wonderful. Um, I, I would really appreciate it. We're moving forward with that grant allocation and hopefully we end up with, uh, a, a nice little center over there at the fire department area. So, thank you and I'll talk to you.
Just one question.
Uh, before, yeah, before the twenty first. So, that'd be wonderful. Uh, it's a, a good chunk of money and you can build with it. And I think after our experiences here, uh, we, uh, merit, uh, being a central location for disasters into the future, including fire. Um, it's a wonderful, one of the things that we found out through the co-ed, uh, was, uh, Northern Humboldt, Wimporik, uh, was, uh, impacted, uh, and then getting resources out to Willow Creek as well. It's getting impacted because there wasn't a centralized distribution area. They were having to go up into Willow Creek because of the fire as they staged the, uh, resource center up there, the, uh, resource storage area and reached out to get a, a storage area temporary, sort of like we did with the containers in, uh, Arcade or McKinleyville. Ended up being in McKinleyville, but, um, the same concept goes there. If, uh, there are fires up in the hills here or a disaster happens up in the hills here, um, uh, we need to have the resources down here to get up there and then, uh, uh, and they have them up in the hills now, but, you know, if we have a disaster down here, we don't want to have to go up there to get them. Farnell gets cut off by floods, uh, the bridge, lose like slides. Um, I, I think, uh, there's not an appropriate spot or the land availability or the, uh, uh, everyone from Fortuna seems to be supporting it over here. So, uh, if we can establish this at the, uh, Riedel Fire Department, I think it'll be an optimum spot for us to go. I prefer, uh, uh, the top property, but you can't buy mine with it either, so. Thank you guys very much.
Uh, before he leaves, I'll be picking that, uh, what does it take to establish? To, to what you do with? You're trying to, probably, what do we, what do we have to do as a city or a council? What do we have to do? Just a letter or?
I think it would be just a letter and a partnership, uh, in the end. Uh, so the partnership would require some effort on part of the city to provide, uh, uh, personnel down there. Um, mostly it would be the Community Resource Center and the Fire Department. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce would probably relocate there as well. Um, but the people, it gives the Emergency Operations Center a place to live during a disaster and in the meantime, uh, the resource centers can do what they do every day and provide resources to people through a modern building. Um, so basically it's a hardened building, uh, resisting to disaster, self-autonomous with, uh, its own power, uh, and so generator and solar, et cetera. Um, and designed to deal with a disaster. So the, I'm sorry, I'm taking, okay. Uh, the idea being that, uh, during this disaster, we had to relocate from Fire Department to the school, to the, uh, Resource Center. Now, I mean, we split resources, right? Um, so we all collaborated. It was a wonderful collaboration. But if we had all been centralized, it would have been easier for the survivors to reach out and get those resources. We didn't have refrigeration capacity. We didn't have, uh, storage capacity. We, thanks to the city, we got containers, et cetera. Um, if we, the building would encompass everything that we needed during this disaster, but didn't have, as well as the resources that we did have. A portion of this, I am, I envision going to the Fire Department as well to harden their facilities. Um, so, uh, you know where the library is, it'll go there. But that's the idea. It's pretty simple, pretty clear in hindsight or in context of the recent disaster that we've just had.
So it requires a building?
Yep.
And they said it's a grant?
Okay, okay. No matching in kind, nothing like that. Just, uh, uh, it was released just before the earthquake and, uh, is due in late February. So it's coming up on the due date and I'm rounding up and drafting letters of support. So, um, basically, that's it. And the Fire Department will be, uh, the lead on it. They have a five oh one C three that they can run through.
So, so the manager, do you need a, do we need a consensus from the council or to, to do that?
So, uh, as I, uh, chatted with the council earlier, we probably are gonna have to have a special meeting in between, uh, this meeting and, uh, one upcoming. So that would be the perfect time for it.
Okay. So there's time, there's tail times.
Oh, yeah. Just a friend reminder. I know how busy everyone's been. It's been, I'm exhausted. Thank you very much. Appreciate you giving that.
Um, now we lost the consent, but.
Do you know what public presentation?
I thought it was, did I miss someone? I thought.
Well, my question was on the, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it with public presentations with the, the, item that we brought up on Second Avenue. Is that something that, you can't discuss it tonight because of the Brown Act, but can we, uh, I'd like to ask if we have a consensus that we can put that on a future agenda to find out what the, you know, what that entails to happen. Yeah, something we can ask for. You're the mayor, huh?
No, I said, yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we have, we already checked it out.
So we can, we can ask to have it on a future agenda, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, fair enough. No hand raised, no emails? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone, uh, any council member have any items to remove?
Let's remove item number four.
Anyone in the public that would like to remove anything? And, um, is there a, um, motion to approve items one, two, and three on the consent calendar? I saw a motion, a second, a second. Both. Motion carries. Four, zero. Councilmember Wilson, item number four.
Yes, uh, I want to word this in such a way that it not be taken as a, as a criticism to the staff and the, I mean, it's meant more to be as a, as a compliment to the staff in their effort, uh, to accomplish what they did. And it's on the item, uh, in the, it's for the retroactive reimbursement of like, like, when we stood right of the hundred and twenty-four thousand that it took for the showers and the portable toilets to be paid for that we had during the disaster. And I, I just want to draw attention to, um, there are, there are people within the community or without the community that want to criticize the efforts that have gone on, uh, in the spite, in spite of the disaster and they're all for that when that happens. And then now the bill comes due and the former hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of it is, you know, what are we doing? And, uh, first of all, I want to, I want to thank staff for being able to respond and get showers here and get the toilets because there was no resources. And then the bill, here's the bill. And so I just want to note that the city, that comes out of the city's coffers. I don't know if we'll be able to get reimbursed for it. Uh, but that's an expense that falls largely to the city, to my understanding. And, um, I just want that noted, that's an effort that Riedel supplied to both people in the community and people in or without the community that came to advantage of these facilities. Any comments?
Uh, and I would ju, I would just add to that, uh, uh, there's a very good chance we're gonna be reimbursed for the costs of the, uh, of the, uh, of all these facilities that were provided on, on basically hours' notice. Um, the, uh, and the, the question is more whether it's gonna be re, uh, reimbursed a hundred percent or seventy-five, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Wilson. For motions, does anyone have comments? Questions?
Can I make a motion that would be accepted by the number four?
That motion is there a second? Second. Motion carries four, zero. Report to the staff communication. City manager, staff update. Okay, show you through in our packets. City manager?
Alright, thank you, Mayor Doris, members of the council. So, uh, just to talk a little bit about the earthquake, uh, and, uh, the uh, process that we're in right now, which is, uh, yeah, in the initial stages of the recovery effort. Um, we are working on, uh, establishing, uh, disaster case managers. So, uh, obviously in, in this particular disaster, there's a wide variety of people, uh, impacted uh, by the disaster, uh, including a wide range of housing situations. Everything from, you know, chimney collapses to, uh, you know, foundations and everything in between. Um, that's kind of unique. Most of the experience in California recently has to do with wildfires where the homes are one hundred percent destroyed, uh, in which, uh, the cleanup tasks can take, uh, well over a year or just to accomplish, uh, you know, uh, of those, uh, those sites. Um, we are working on identifying a funding source to pay for, uh, disaster case managers and identifying a nonprofit to deliver disaster case management, um, services. So, uh, that's one aspect of, of what we're doing. Uh, and actually, the most important thing to note here, and I'm gonna be repeating this over and over, and I encourage the council and staff and members of the public to repeat it over and over again. Uh, one of the things that makes this disaster a little bit unique is that the Federal Emergency Management Agency, you know, is not going to be, uh, involved in this, uh, particular response and recovery effort. Uh, what that means is that there's not going to be, uh, individual assistance. So money from the federal government for private property and money from the federal government, uh, for, uh, uh, for personal property. Um, so that's, that's a huge difference between maybe some of the public's expectations uh, on this particular issue. Uh, what the federal government has done is made available SBA, uh, Small Business Administration lending, which is currently going on down at the Community Resource Center. And several million dollars in this new financing has been, uh, been approved and is moving, moving through. We certainly want to encourage people to take advantage of that while that's available. There's a window of time, uh, in particular, if they're gonna be available here, uh, I believe, uh, until about Friday, until Friday. Uh, so I want to encourage everybody to continue to, uh, to take a look at that because that's a very, uh, relatively, uh, quick process as long as you have your paperwork, uh, to, uh, to go through. Um, the other solutions to the, to the, to the crisis, again, with no federal intervention, are going to be mostly, uh, pre-existing grant programs to the state of California and lending programs. And, uh, so owner occupied rehabilitation and other programs similar to that. Um, I really want to thank the county in particular because they're willing and, uh, to take on the administrative burden of, of handling these loans, uh, and processes which are quite, um, extraordinary in the amount of paperwork that has to go be accomplished in order to, uh, make these funds available. And so the county's been right with Riedel, uh, since day one, uh, including the board's appropriation of a million dollars to assist in this, uh, uh, recovery effort, uh, with, uh, their federal bar for dollars. So really, uh, I really can't say enough about the county's efforts, uh, towards, towards these issues. Um, so that being said, uh, the, um, uh, another component of, of the, though I talked a little bit about the disaster case management, so that because each case is unique, we need people who are gonna be able to handle maybe a dozen cases and help people through the paperwork process of what's available to them. Uh, the other aspect is going to be this long-term recovery, uh, phase. And normally in the wildfires in California, many of them federally, uh, declared disasters, those processes don't even start for, for six months after the disaster. So I, I want to stress that, uh, that things aren't going quickly, but at a government pace of quickly. Uh, but I encourage people to have, uh, patience with this process because when we deliver information to the public, we want to make sure it's accurate and actionable by the public. So we are, uh, dependent on nonprofits in this case of coming in and, uh, helping with this situation and putting boots on the ground, uh, to assist those who maybe don't qualify for SBA assistance and the most vulnerable in the community. Um, so we have been working with, uh, Hope Crisis Network and the Habitat for Humanity, uh, to try to come up with, uh, a workable, uh, uh, framework to move forward. Of course, these are two, uh, separate, independent, uh, nonprofits that answer to their own boards that have their own mission statements and requires their cooperation. They're not, you know, forced to, uh, to be here. Uh, and neither of these organizations are based in Humboldt County. Um, the other issue is that, uh, that, you know, we're also going to need a, uh, finance, uh, section that handles and distributes the money, uh, for, uh, their work and for, for any of the philanthropic donations and county donations that come in, uh, for the housing issues. So that there's kind of a clean break, uh, in terms of, you know, the city, it won't be the city doling out any funds. It'll be a separate, independent financing committee of, of individuals who, and organizations that have put money forward to fund certain specific projects. Uh, the city's responsibility in this case is to enforce the building code and, uh, make sure uh, that, that, you know, their licensed contractors, so on and so forth, quality work being done. Um, so, uh, so the process is ongoing. I wish I had more to say, but again, I, we're not in a signed MOU with certain, with these groups to pull them all together into a task force. Uh, but we are working on it and I think we're, we're gonna have, uh, uh, some progress on that over the next few weeks of getting this, uh, process started. Um, I hope to, there is still the hotel voucher program through the counties. So if you are, uh, displaced from the earthquake, again, we want to encourage people to call seven oh seven four four one five thousand in order to, uh, uh, to, uh, receive, uh, that aid if you are in need. And that's the real underscore there, that you need, uh, the assistance, uh, otherwise, um, uh, uh, otherwise, you know, if you don't need it, you might not be able to receive those services. Uh, so that's, uh, just in a, in a brief, a brief version of, of a lot of work going on and trying to pull together a lot of different elements, um, that, uh, normally, uh, we shouldn't have to do because the federal government should be here. Um, uh, but according to the formulas that they work off of and how they declare federal disasters, there's actually this methodology that's used and there's not really been arbitrary decision by the president or the cabinet as to which disasters they pick to declare and which ones they don't. So unfortunately, Riedel just fits into that category of, uh, the damage not being, uh, extensive enough, um, uh, and needing a dollar, an arbitrary dollar value threshold, which, um, certainly, uh, there are significant equity issues there and in, you know, looking And in, you know, looking at some of, uh, some of that, Riedel is not alone. There's been a lot of kind of these smaller level disasters in various, uh, communities all throughout the United States where, uh, FEMA has not stepped in and, but has stepped in and, you know, much wealthier communities in different circumstances. Um, so with that, uh, we do have the rest of the staff report, including the, the, uh, police department report for you available, including some stop data on gender, race, and, and whatnot. So with that, I'll return it to the kid, up to the mayor to see if there's any questions and, uh, or any comments to staff.
Thank you, city manager, thanks for the update. Mayor Bothen, uh, no questions, but wow, lots of calls for service this afternoon.
Definitely increased.
Yeah, why do you think that is?
You know, I don't know, I, um, I can tell you that one of the calls for service has multiple calls for service, it's the same individual.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, so you guys are busy, thank you. And that's it, thank you. Remember all? The town hall meeting for our night? Is that just going to be basically an update on the things that we've talked about?
So there, there is no town hall for, for tomorrow night, so I don't know, it will be up to the, uh, senators to skip.
Okay. I thought somebody said, it was, it was supposed to come, oh, okay, I didn't know that. And, um, I was wondering, Randy, could you give us a little update about the water situation today?
After the day?
Yeah.
Yes, at current time, we're working on Burke Street, getting that line replaced. Um, back in two thousand and six, there were major loop, uh, defect installed and main line that came from the tank that feeds that loop, which is ninety percent of it will drop the area to town. Um, when a valve was shut off, unfortunately, two other valves that were also tied into the system that were closed during the earthquake were not reopened. Um, something with, uh, dry heat and everything, um, got them up, it doesn't close. So once we got that, we saw how we were able to get access to the valves, they opened again, the water flowing again. So this is basically going back and backtracking from what we did in earthquakes during that chaos and getting everything open again.
Okay, oh, I understand that, I just wanted.
It is got up and running again and I believe we got a new piece of pipe valve piece in at Secoria and Burke she stalled, which is a special.
I appreciate all the work you guys did today, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, I don't think I have any questions on the just on the, on the city manager's report.
And, yeah, thanks for that update, um, thanks for bringing it up, um, what all, there were people who were up in arms thinking they weren't notified and really wanted to explain that it wasn't planned. Kind of settled down, so.
We're doing ones that were shot.
Exactly, yeah. Well, thank you for everything you did. Any, uh, one in the public, have any questions on, on this topic? Or any comment? No, any hand raised, email? And we'll close that and move on to special presentation. Tobacco Free North Coast, page forty in our packets.
Um, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So we have Jay McCovry, uh, the property director with Tobacco Free North Coast to give a presentation, uh, to your council.
Hello, thank you for coming.
Thank you, uh, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Wow, um, quite a lot has happened since I was last here in November, supporting the Green American Smokeout. So I, we do appreciate your time tonight. This is really just an educational presentation about tobacco retail licensing. My project that I work for and those of Amber and Jay, who you'll meet shortly, are funded by the California Department of Public Health and we're really here to assist rural counties and cities, uh, come up to par with what urban areas have been doing to prevent and reduce tobacco addiction. So one of the things that we're talking about tonight is tobacco retail licensing. Tobacco retail licensing is recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention at a national level and the California Department of Public Health as a public health best practice to help prevent, uh, tobacco addiction. It reduces illegal sales, uh, to kids and, uh, a number of other things you can do with that tool. Uh, citywide policy is important because it creates a sustainable program. Um, the voters have spoken about this issue as well in, uh, November, as you may recall, uh, the state voters overwhelmingly supported, uh, a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco to prevent kids from getting addicted, especially the vaping products that have been, become so popular in the last ten years among you. Um, so this, uh, tobacco retail licensing option, several policy options were presented. Take some of these issues and start the discussion about a consistent countywide policy that creates a level playing field for all of the tobacco retailers throughout the county. So that's what we're doing tonight, starting that discussion and, um, uh, we hope to, uh, the outcome of the same rule, continue good relations with the council and staff to, uh, keep, keep this process moving forward. And, um, as the county develops their policy, we'll also be able to be in line and, and be consistent throughout, throughout county. Uh, so I'm, I'm going to just leave it at that, uh, and introduce you, uh, Amber Ware and Jay Macedo. Amber, uh, works for a project called North Health for Health. They are supporting tobacco retail licensing. She was instrumental in actually, uh, getting, uh, the county of, uh, Delmar County to adopt the tobacco retail policy just very recently. We're, we're also active in, in Lake County and Manasima County, um, doing the same kind of work. And then following Amber will be Jay Macedo. Jay is a, a longtime tobacco control advocate, formerly worked for Sonoma County. Uh, he works for a project called Communities Addressing Nicotine, also a north coast region-wide project. And he is also consultant for several tribal tobacco prevention projects. So you kind of got the eighteen here tonight. And, uh, we are, like I said, here to help jurisdictions prevent and reduce tobacco addiction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Amber. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, I'll be real quick. So, uh, I'm Amber Ware, project director for North Cal for Health. Um, and, and as Jay said, we did work a lot with Delmar County and getting their tobacco retail license passed. Um, and I'm not sure, but in your packets, I think there was a link to the video, Youth Voices. That was our project produced that and, um, if you haven't listened to it or watched it yet, please watch it. Those are our youth from all four counties represented, uh, to talk about the challenges of nicotine addiction, uh, in amongst them and their peers. So, um, you, we've worked a lot with the youth, they came and presented it as well to say that this really is an issue. Uh, some of the things that, uh, other tobacco retail policies have included, uh, to limit and reduce, um, exposure to youth are, are things like, um, taking a tobacco retail, a limit of density, how many tobacco retailers there are in a community, you can add that to a policy, you can create a policy, uh, for, if you have pharmacies to come in, to only have pharmacies that don't sell tobacco. Um, and then proximity to schools, making limits to kid-friendly areas on where tobacco is sold in the tobacco retail license. And then I think you also have a flyer on here, um, that talks about, you know, what tobacco companies already know. So there's a lot of research and marketing on how to get their next customer. And so they know that, um, kids who see it, try it. So this is about limiting that exposure to kids, um, where those products are being sold, if they're near kid-friendly items, if, uh, they're all over the windows, there are plugins that you can put in a TRL that addresses and, uh, just asking for ten percent window coverage. Uh, it helps with lights, you guys have a beautiful community, you want to keep it that way as you grow. Uh, it also helps with crime-free, um, programs that, you know, police can see in as they're making their rounds. People can see out, it's a safety issue, so a lot of communities do adopt, um, some sort of, uh, how many ads can be displayed on windows of these retailers? And then, um, I think that was it, the where it is in the stores or in the proximity to schools. So those are just some of the plugins that I wanted to highlight that you can take a look at. We have sample language, we, um, all have access to, um, Public Health Law Center that can help, uh, write those things or just come into parity, uh, when the county decides to do that. And then I'll hand it off to Jay to talk about, um, enforcement and merchant education.
Thank you, Amber, thank you, thank you, Randy. Welcome, Jay, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Jay Macedo with the Health and Social Policy News Two, uh, who's addressing nicotine can. I, um, have been involved in tobacco for the last twenty years, working with both tribes and, um, cities and counties and passing policies and then helping to implement and, um, also, uh, enforce those policies, helping to enforce them. So many California jurisdictions have implemented a robust local TRL policy. Research on these types of TRL policies has shown an average annual reduction in youth tobacco sales by twenty-six percent, with many communities exceeding fifty to ninety percent reductions. Local TRL fees that are charged from the retailer, um, are high enough to support and sustain local administration and enforcement. The average TRL fee in California was three hundred and forty-four dollars per year, uh, with four hundred and seventy-five dollars being the most common fee. The model TRL policy provides options for each community to determine the best enforcement protocols. Of state-funded technical assistance or TA providers, our three agencies are able to, uh, assist with drafting TRL policies, uh, TRL fees, TRL administration. Uh, we offer free compliance support tool counties by educating retailers and the community about the TRL, as well as now the statewide flavor ban in Riedel. I went to the local retailers, tobacco retailers here tonight and, um, all of them are in, um, compliance, um, in terms of that statewide flavor ban. There's a few kind of chew and, and little cigars that are still mint flavored, but, uh, I think with education that could, um, you know, we could eliminate those as well. Uh, our agencies can develop and purchase store TRL signs, educational materials, provide merchant trainings, perform store visits and surveys and assist with implementation tools such as license protocols, applications, compliance checks from other counties and cities, uh, that would make sense for here in, in Riedel. We get work with local enforcement to conduct young adult tobacco purchase surveys or assist with recruiting of adults for decoy operations to evaluate the TRL policy objective, which is reducing illegal tobacco sales for those under twenty-one. Uh, Jay mentioned this in the beginning, standardized local TRL policies across Temple County can help to ensure regular education, compliance and enforcement of federal, state and local laws. Design and protect youth from tobacco and create a level playing field for retailers throughout Humboldt County. We respectfully invite council to direct staff to work with our projects and develop this policy for further consideration by the council. More details on the TA available and our contact information is in all of your packets. And we look forward to meeting with staff and council for TA consultation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have some questions, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, so, so the citizen, I know we have six people with, uh, are sex retailers and retail tobacco.
Yes.
Who do they, are they having to go to the state to do that now?
Yes, yeah. They would pay a fine from the, the, uh, state agency to get a license. And it's like an annual fee that they pay to have that, um, license.
So this would be one layer on top of that, that's where you have city?
Yeah, yes, because the state is not able to check all the tobacco retailers, but they're not very able to check it so well. Uh, then a local license gives local control in order to be able to, um, uh, enforce it at, at the local level.
So, so essentially we would have to, you tell me, I guess you'd have to write an ordinance to make this thing work or that?
It has the direction on the council, like you certainly know about.
Okay. I just understand what the statute is. What, what, what would you have to do to make this happen?
If, if, if I may, uh, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot and, uh, working with the county, um, you know, rural areas, obviously we have our own unique challenges and, and, uh, you know, one of the things Jay mentioned, the state hardly ever gets up here to do any enforcement, uh, operations, they're near its, uh, underage sales compliance offices in Santa Rosa. So, um, you know, and, and there's no new, uh, money provided through the statewide flavor ban for anyone to do any more enforcement. So that's why the TRL local, taking local control, that's important now, are small communities, it's going to be a challenge, you know, and we're going to have to work together to make this work. That's why we're approaching the county first. If, you know, in their environmental health program, they visit all these stores anyway. So in terms of annual compliance checks, uh, if we could, you know, do this on a countywide basis, we could come up with a kind of solution, a revenue sharing MOU or something that would support, uh, environmental health, doing a lot of the regular compliance monitoring and then local law enforcement could work with Public Health or others to, uh, do occasional, uh, uh, compliance checks or decoy operations.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the, you're looking to see the county do this, not so much the city individually?
Well, in every jurisdiction, we want to get everybody on the same playing field, you know, eventually, uh, so that we're all working together and the merchants then don't have different regulations to follow in different jurisdictions. Um, but, you know, it'll take some time, it's not something that we expect to happen overnight. In fact, we've been working with the county for over a year on it, so.
Alright, I got one more question, I'll just see.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson, what about all?
No.
Mayor Bothen?
Um, no questions, Ben, thank you for being here and for all the material you've mentioned.
Good, good, bad time reading.
Thank you, are there anyone from the public who wish to ask a question? And thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. And good luck and, you know, let us know what we can do on the road to with the county. Thank you. Be safe in the trials. Now we move on to special call item. authorized the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with the, with the county of Humboldt to administer the city C E E E projects and programs, page forty in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council, go ahead and, if you can, turn this over to media fellow and director Caldwell to, to break it down.
Thank you very much, uh, it's Mayor Randy, it's just around page fifty of your package. The city manager touched upon it earlier this evening, uh, administering the CDG program is an onerous task, especially for small communities. It really required a dedicated full-time CDG person, um, with extreme knowledge to administer the program. Um, as a result of the earthquake, uh, we are hoping to shift gears. As the council may remember, last fall, we actually, um, kind of shifted gears at that point, moving our program income, which we were about to lose, um, to the sewer line replacement project on Andrew Street. Um, as a result of the earthquake, uh, we decided that the best use of the money to redirect it back to the owner occupied program and to establish a, well, we get a location program at the same time. But we don't have the capacity to administer that program. So we reached out to our partners at the county and they graciously offered to administer this program on our behalf. They actually worked with the city of Fortuna and the city of Dulay administering their programs. So with that, what we're asking the council to do is actually authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding, the M O U with the county so that we can get this program back on board.
Thank you. I'm really excited that of that shift and that you included the renter aspect of it because Rio del really, a renter kind of community itself.
And we're likely going to have to modify our program guidelines, um, to, to, to really create a position program. But we're going to find some other guidelines that have already been established and approved by H C G. And of course, still rebound and then incorporate them into our guidelines.
Thank you. So bring in some questions from the council. Mayor Brokem?
No questions from the public at all?
Okay. Are there any, I have no questions. Are there any questions from the public? Okay, then. Is there a motion to approve, to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with the county to administer the city C D G program and projects? Projects and programs. So you have a motion in there second? Second? A motion in a second? Motion carries four zero. We'll move on to approve resolution number 1572 dash two zero two three, authorizing staff to make application to the Department of Housing and Community Development to redirect use of C D, C D G program income back to the city owner occupied rehabilitation program and establishing a residential rental rehabilitation program. Page seventy-two in our package.
Mayor Barnes, so I'm just a council of the hills, right into our previous discussion regarding that when he was preparing. And it's as simple as that. This resolution actually authorized staff to make application to C D G H C D to establish both the owner occupied rehabilitation program and to establish the rental rehabilitation program. As there are no questions, I would recommend the council without resolution, 1572 dash 2023.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Brokem, Councilwoman Wilson?
Followed. Hello, Sharon Wolf, Three Pinder Street. And really I just want to make a comment about the program and it's great that the county is willing to administer that for us. So that's terrific. They have experience and that'd be a big help. The program limitations of the C D G program are 80% of the median income for the area. And that's the target, of course, for it. I know because I qualified for it many years ago when I bought in Rio del. And it's great what it's there for. A whole lot of the homeowners though, aren't going to qualify under that standard. So I've, I've just, I've reiterated it before, so I'm not telling you anything you haven't heard before. But it's this missing gap. We have certain pots of money that are coming and thank goodness that they are coming and they are targeted specifically to low to very low income, which is great because they also need the help. But there's also the people that aren't going to qualify for that, don't have enough to pay for it on their own. And there's pretty much nothing out there. We do have the S B A, which we're appreciative of. But they're coming in, they're quoting people over 4% interest for their quotes rather than the 2.3 that's in the flyer. I have heard from people negotiate that with them because they have room to negotiate. And I'm not happy that they're making people ask to negotiate if that's true. They're also coming in, they're pushing a little hard for people to make decisions on it. And I understand why because they're telling people, of course, there's a huge demand for the program. All the storms, all the earthquakes, everything is going on and the money is depleted really fast. So I understand the need for urgency. But we're also in a situation where most of us have no clue what is going on. Perhaps there's going to be information at the town hall that would be of interest to people. Perhaps there could be some kind of a program with the nonprofits that target that missing group that doesn't, you know, qualify for the existing money and makes too much for that. So those are things we need to know before deciding we're going to take on debt or do these other things. So it's really very difficult to know what to do at this point other than hurry up and wait. And you all know that as well as everybody, we're on government time. It's hurry up and wait and hurry up and wait. And again, I just want to say with the C D G program, it's terrific. Redirect that program income, you know, get as many of the homes back up so we're not losing our housing stock. That's fantastic. But don't forget, the majority of the homeowners are not going to qualify for these sources of funding. And so we're pretty much stuck and will probably take it on debt like everyone else will. But hopefully as little as humanly possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, are there any? There a motion to approve resolution 1572 dash two zero two three? So we've got a motion, is there a second? A motion in a second? Motion carries four zero. I do want to say that because city manager did say that the S B A group was going away on February 10th, which is this Friday. They're only going away from the community center. It is eligible, we are eligible to reach out to them until May 8th, I believe is the actual date. So you'd have to do it online or call, but that option will stay.
I think March 6th.
It is. Yeah. No, thank you. I know where I got my agent. Now we are moving on to council reports and communications. Mayor Brokem?
Thank you. Well, I like what Nick announced in meetings because he just reported out. So I'm just going to say what he said. But yeah, no, I do think this disaster resiliency center letter of support, obviously we're all in work with that. But I'm just going to reiterate that it is nice to take this disaster as an opportunity to get right on the top of learning what we could have helped while it's fresh in our mind. So thank you, Nick, for taking up the the brunt of the work on, on, on getting that correct. Appreciate it. Let's see, I had a Cal Cities Policy Meeting for the Transportation and Communication and Public Works Subcommittee. It was our yearly priority setting session and over five hours. I will report out one amazing thing. We've obviously decided that one of our priorities this year is disaster preparedness, but especially as it pertains to infrastructure and public works. That is an issue this committee will be attacking hard in the next year. So I was happy to hear it and keep you updated. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I just have, I have an issue with the meeting. The way we worked out is shuddering into this week and say, I mean, you've done this, but anyway, that's there's still there's still this organic thing. I mentioned to someone earlier, I saw a thing on it's on cable, it's called New York City Group Deal. And they went, and they went into this thing about New York City actually has the biggest recycling center in the United States. How they do this and they do this thing with this organic place that we're going to run into this 1383. And they actually have little brown bins that everybody takes in dumpster. Orange fields and all this organic stuff. And so that's still a big mystery to be understood how that's going to be implemented within us as a county and the city. I will continue to mention that probably the way it's, if it's going to work at all, it'll be through the universal collection thing that we talked about as a requirement of Riddell. And currently about half of Riddell has a collection by the Congress. So that's, that'll change the pace of well, I'm sure we have a full room with that takes place. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
I had Humboldt Transit Authority meeting and meeting. We went over the financial statements for all the systems. They seem to be doing well. It's picking up a lot after COVID. And some of them quite, aren't quite making Fairbox yet, but they're giving us extra time to make Fairbox before that we have to decide what to do with those routes. We also passed a resolution to purchase up to 11 new flyer hydrogen fuel sim sail buses and engineering needed to extend the range of those buses. So that's a good thing. We'll have nine new hydrogen buses. Tomorrow I have a senior center, not tomorrow, on the night, a senior community luncheon, having a catering luncheon for seniors 55 years and older. And it's really a nice way for people in the community to get together. They also have other meetings for moms with kids to come. And Sarah's doing a really good job and it's good to see that in the community. And then tomorrow that we're having the cleanup where we can go to the, let me read it. Cal Transit City of Rio del Ecology Guild announced dump day vouchers for residents will be handed out Wednesday, February 8th at Fireman's Park in Lot in Rio del. The dump event, part of the Governor Newsom 1.2, Clean California Initiative, which makes the event and other litter prevention and educational events occurring throughout the state possible. Who tomorrow will be Rio del residents only, what? You'll get a free dump day voucher. And it's 8:00 AM until noon or until the vouchers run out at the Fireman's Park in Lot. And this dump day voucher is limited to one passenger truck or bed or cargo full of residential debris for free when disposed between Wednesday, February 8th, 2023 and February 27th, 2023 at the Ecology G Center. So that would be something you might want to take advantage of if you still have things left over from the earthquake. Clean California programs. So and I think I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I had a meeting with Linda Nadas. And she is the coordinator of the Community Emergency Response Team Trainer. She's a trainer and she's looking to have a training session here in Rio del for the police, the fire department, but also citizens. If anyone wants to be a part of that, we will be getting a message out. We'll be telling you the whens and the wheres. That's still to be determined, but it will be sometime late April. I think she's, she, we were, when we were talking today, it will be sometime late April with the location of things has just been worked out. But it's definitely not just for police or fire. It is for community members who wish to be prepared in case of an emergency, in case of another emergency. It, it, it will, it's a three day training. So you get a certificate. It's the real deal. When, if you take this training, you'll be as prepared as you can be for an emergency. And so it's definitely something worth, worth doing. And so word on that will be forthcoming. And I had a meeting with the Redwood Coast tsunami working group and they came here to Rio del to show support for us. And they have said, if there's anything they can do, let them know and they will be willing to do whatever they can to help Rio del. And next week I have mayor's, mayor's select committee. So if anyone wants to be on the L A CO, isn't it L A CO? Is that word was on?
Yeah.
Put in an application and the meeting's next week, but you can put in an application and to the county and be considered. So I think that's all that I have. Is it a community member? I believe it's both the community and select. Gordon. Yeah, I know. I think he knows. Okay, so I think that's it. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A motion in a second? Second? Okay.
It's adjourned until February 1st?
6:30 PM. Thank you everyone for coming.